Welcome to the May 5, 2025 work session of the Board of Commissioners. Before we call this meeting to order, I will call on Larry Pittman to please start or start us with an invocation.
Let's pray. Almighty God, our Father, we thank you for your love for us, who sustains us and supplies our every need. Lord, we pray for those who are suffering in any way and ask that they will find help among those who are able to help and be willing to do so.
Lord, we pray for those who have lost loved ones in recent days. We ask that you would comfort and strengthen and give peace to those who are suffering at loss and give them hope of the time to come when Jesus returns. Lord, we just ask that you be with us and bless us. Let your Spirit lead us. And we do thank you for the sheriff's deputies who are here, Lord. We thank you for their service. We recently memorialized those who have died in the line of duty. Over the years here in this county, we pray that you would help us not add any to that list, but we thank you for their service and their devotion. Now, Lord, whatever is going to be presented here tonight, we pray that your Spirit would guide us in it. And let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. Amen.
Amen. All right, I will call this work session from May 5, 2025 to order. I'm going to call on our attorney, Daniel, at this time to kind of give us some instruction as how we need to proceed from here since we do not have a quorum.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just note the lack of a quorum. And unless until we have a quorum, the board can listen to presentations that are on the agenda, but it cannot take any action and there will be no closed session. So otherwise, we can just, we'll listen, so.
Okay, so since there's no need to approve agendas or anything, I will call on Donna Carpenter and John Mills to discuss the tourism authority.
And you may not know it, but it is National Tourism Week. So happy National Travel and Tourism Week to everyone. I encourage you to travel and I encourage visitors to come to Cabarrus County, spend their money and go back home. So with that said, I have brought you all some, a stack of some bumper stickers and some magnets that you all are welcome to keep for yourself and give away. It has the county logo and the five stars represent the five municipalities within the county. So give those away at your leisure. So thank you so much for having us this evening. I want to always start by saying we're not here to ask you for money. So you don't have to figure us out in your budget that you're currently working on, but to talk to you a little bit about our budget that is generated by occupancy tax that is also paid by the visitor, not by local residents, but by the visitor. And just for those of you, it's a new audience and those at home, just a reminder that, does anybody know how many hotels we have in the county? Anyone want to guess? Okay, I'll tell you. Thirty. And we have thirty hotels with three thousand room nights. We are funded by occupancy tax. That is a tax that is levied by you all and collected by you all, and then it is remitted back to the CVB and we are legislated by the state of North Carolina by what we can spend that money on. It can only be spent on tourism-related items. So just a little background on how we're funded and where our money comes from. Oh, I have this, don't I? I'm in control of my destiny, maybe. Did I do it wrong, John? Nope. There we go. Of course, we have a very short period of time and I can tell you that when Mr. Meesmer came through for board orientation, we had him there captive for three hours talking about hospitality and tourism. So Mr. Newton has yet to be able to go through that three-hour process. But, so we're going to condense this down. I'm not going to read every single thing to you, but looking at this slide, it is our annual tourism activity. And I think the big thing is to look at the $624 million that visitors spent in our community over this past year. And if you have any questions about any of these, don't hesitate to stop me. There we go. This is just it broken down on a daily basis. And again, these are big numbers and this is in 2023. All of our numbers are a year in arrears and we do not make up these numbers. These numbers come from the state of North Carolina and they are given to each county within the state to be able to share with everyone. So looking at a daily number of combined state and local taxes that were generated by visitors who come to visit us, you can see these numbers are very big. Now, you might say, so what good does that do us, the residents who live here? Well, let me tell you, the more money the visitor spends, the higher this number gets. And this represents, this $171.51, down to the penny, represents a tax savings for each resident, not per household, per resident in Cabarrus County. In other words, if we didn't have visitors spending money here, each resident in Cabarrus County would pay an additional $171 on their taxes every single year. So it's our goal to make this number grow higher and higher each year so that it is a better tax savings to our local residents. Now, this is a blank slide, John said, don't freak out when it's blank. So it's hard to tell you all, this is why board orientation takes three hours, but we have put in a quick clip of all of the sales and marketing things that we have done over the past year, and I hope you enjoy this. I can't. Happy to answer questions about that at a later time if you have any and explain those, all of those numbers and big words. So just so you know, you saw the pictures of the burgers. I don't know if you live in Cabarrus County and you haven't heard of Cabarrus Burger Madness. I don't know that you live in Cabarrus County at this point. So I just quickly want to touch on, you know, we are, our clients are the visitor, but during COVID, Cabarrus Burger Madness was born out of a really hard time for our community and that was during COVID. And I was on a phone call with my counterparts across the country and they were talking about Restaurant Week and we don't do a Restaurant Week. And someone from Canada said, well, we do a Burger Week. And I went, burgers? We can do burgers? We can do burgers all day long. And during this time, it was during a time that our restaurants, our local restaurants, didn't know whether they could allow people inside their restaurants to eat or only have takeout. And I think it changed from week to week to week. And so we said, what can we do to help our local restaurants so they don't have to shutter their doors? And how do we make their cash registers ring during this time? So we reached out to a few of the local restaurants and we didn't want to put an undue burden on them. So we reached out to the chefs and the owners and said, what about this Burger Week? Would you all want to do it? And their answer was a resounding, yes, we'd love to, but how are we going to eat this many burgers? How are people going to eat this many burgers in a week? Can we do it for the whole month? And we're like, sure, we can do it for the whole month. Well, lo and behold, five years later, here we sit. I don't think we could get rid of this campaign if we wanted to. And you can look at the data on this. We had 732 participants that ate burgers from seven states. Ninety-seven point six percent of the participants were from North Carolina. Two thousand and five total check-ins at participating restaurants. A reported over 5,000 burgers sold and two users visited all 21 locations. We do know who they are and we're, we're doing something special for them. We have to get their permission to release their name that they went to all 21 restaurants. But I'm here to tell you, there's some other little stats on there that you can read at your leisure, but I'm here to tell you that when a restaurant owner gets teary and says, I ran out of ingredients every day and I could never pay for the amount of exposure that this program has giving, given my new restaurant, that I had people walk in here and say, we had no idea you were here. That's what it's all about. So Cabarrus Burger Madness lives on for another year and will continue with that. I hope you all will participate and go try some of those burgers. And I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to Lee's Sandwich Shop. He worked that mess, though, I will tell you that. If you see Lee on social media, you'll know he, he worked his clients and his customers to get them to vote. So another part of what we do is group sales. Sales and marketing is our objective. And so looking at this, what I want to focus on are those market segment totals at the bottom of the screen. Two hundred and sixty-five leads to hotels. So when a client reaches out to us or we go after a client, we send those leads to the hotels. The hotels can either accept the lead or they can say, no, we don't want the business, we don't need the business, we're busy that week, whatever that is. So we don't control what the hotels take or book, but we feed them leads upon leads. And so 265 leads to the hotels for 114,000 room nights and the total economic impact of that was $95 million, as you can see. So that is a huge return on our investment within our community. All right. I belabor things, so I'm going to hurry and quickly move on. So talking about the things that we've accomplished, these are two of the, the two big things that we've accomplished in the last two years, and that is the Mondo Track and at J.M. Robinson High School. And boy, oh, boy, did we ever underestimate this. We thought it was going to be good, but we had no idea just how good it is. You can see there for the total economic impact, and that's just seven events. The turf fields are at three of the high schools in Cabarrus County, closest to the hotels, of course. And you can see they are still performing very well years later. So we are always, we are, our hands are bound a little bit by what we can spend our money on, but we are always looking for creative ways to be able to spend that money as well as benefit our community in, at the same time. The high school project was one such project. We are one of probably the only CVBs in the state of North Carolina that I'm aware of that actually used our money and because we couldn't afford to build a brand-new complex and we said, well, we don't need a complex every single day of the year, every week. We need it more on the weekends. What do we have that we can enhance to be able to utilize that? And that's why we landed on the high schools. And on the backside of that, the ancillary beneficiaries are our student athletes that attend these schools and are able to have these amazing facilities to be able to play and practice on. A couple of the other things that we've done is for destination development. You'll see the, the top picture, that is the flyover. We didn't pay for the flyover, but we paid for the feasibility study when the traffic started getting bad. We said, what's causing the problem? And the problem ended up being the first entrance into the mall. And we went to the governor's office and, well, actually went to the governor's mansion, John did, and we sat down and at that time, exit 49 was the busiest exit in the state and, in the state of North Carolina and generated the most sales tax revenue in the state of North Carolina. So we went to Raleigh and we said, if this goes away, how are you going to replace the sales tax revenue that's generated here? Not we need a flyover because of congestion, but how are you going to replace it? And DOT got on board with us and they expanded the bridge on DeRida as well as the flyover into Concord Mills Mall. The other project is the turf field and performance things and also wayfinding. How do we generate consumer and local confidence from coming from exit 49 and going out to the arena or to Mount Pleasant or Midland, our other municipalities within the destination? And when you're driving, if you've never been here, I think the first time I ever came to Cabarrus County, I was headed to Stanley County, but it was one of those where I went, this is truly God's country and I think I'm lost. But when you see these wayfinding signs, it does give you the comfort, okay, I'm not lost, I'm on my way. So now, I'm going to stop talking. John is much better at just getting straight to the point. I'm going to turn this over to John to talk about dollars.
Well, good evening. So as we get into our FY 2026 budget, I've got you a little bit of a bar graph chart there that shows what the last several years have looked like from an occupancy tax collection. So that occupancy tax number that you see actually is about 96% of our total budget. So it's the occupancy tax that drives us here in Cabarrus County. You could see back into FY 22, as we were coming out of the pandemic at about 6.1 and now we're about 7.3 million going into next year. So we're actually running about 25% ahead of pre-pandemic numbers. So it's amazing to see how this destination has grown coming out of the pandemic. So just to give you an idea, in 2024, our hotels ran 74% occupancy. That's a record for this destination. We also had $116 average daily rate, a record for this destination. So it's amazing to see how that has happened. As we look at these numbers, we have to realize that our numbers from our visitors kind of represent three segments. We have leisure travelers, which Donna talked about. We also have group travelers that Donna talked about, meetings and conventions and events. We also have business travel, people that travel during the week. So the best part is we are seeing occupancy seven days a week. So we have business travel and meetings during the week, and then we have visit family, friends and events over the weekend as well. So that takes a look at kind of what we're looking at going into this next year. As far as spending goes, we have our current allocations on the left and where we're looking at heading in FY 26 on the right. So kind of three main buckets, if you will. On the salary and wage side, we run about 28% of personnel and that includes our sales staff that are outselling to win these events to our destination. On average, most of our peer group, it runs about 40% as far as that allocation for staff. So we're actually pushing about 10%, 10% more into sales and marketing allocations than most of our peers do. I want, also at the bottom, make note that as part of the legislation, one piece obviously is the administrative fee. So this county retains 5% of all occupancy tax collections. So for next year, you're right, about $367,000. So the county is able to take those funds, put them in their general fund for the county's own use. And then obviously, we have this ongoing 5% sports development fund that the county retains as well, that we have a great partnership that's allowed some of the things that Donna spoke about to come, come to be. You know, as we get into sales and marketing, one of the neat things that's happened is really where data has come into play. You know, many, many, many years ago, you might have had thoughts about where your visitors come from. And so now we have some really neat tools at our exposure, we have the ability to look at data to see where visitors are coming from. For example, did you know Raleigh is probably our most important market? They always send the most people, they spend the most. And so not only are we looking at who's sending us the most people, we're looking at how much money they're spending. Greenville, Greensboro, Florence, South Carolina, Columbia, South Carolina, Atlanta, Georgia, those are all about in our top five, top six markets. So we study these markets throughout the year because they can change and then we're able to place advertising dollars in those markets. So it is very much a targeted approach to get to those visitors that might have a propensity to want to visit here throughout the year. So we use that detail and that data to be able to use the advertising dollars before we start spending those money. We know where we're going to put it and the times that we need to put it. So I think that is about it. Just a couple of things as we, we go into this next year, looking at revenue as well. You might have seen a construction of a new hotel in front of Embassy Suites. That's actually a dual-brand hotel. It's a Home Two and a True, so it's 188 rooms, it's under construction, so they will be opening in the summer. And then we also will be seeing some remodeling going on at Embassy Suites throughout the next year as they do some upgrades in their facility. So very excited to see what's going to come from there. So that puts our total budget again, seven, 7,556,500 for FY 26. Questions?
Yep. Well, thank you guys so much for presenting. Certainly appreciate all of the information that you provided us with and the hard work that you guys do for the community.
Thank you. We appreciate you all.
Absolutely.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Commissioner Wortman and County Manager Sean Newton for serving on our board. We, we appreciate it. Drinking fire, drinking water from a fire hose is what Mr. Newton has been doing lately. So thank you very much for your, for your service to our board.
Thank you, guys. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to comment.
Yeah.
And I hope whoever ate all those hamburgers, whoever went to every one of those places, I hope they had a lot of Roll-Aids or something available.
Or cholesterol check. Okay, so we're going to move on to Active Living in Parks. We've got Byron Hagler. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much. Byron Hagler with the Active Living in Parks Department. I also have Ray Moore, our project event manager. And I come before you tonight to discuss the matching incentive grant program that we host here in Cabarrus County. So we're going to flip the script a little bit since we don't have a quorum. So we were going to request a suspension of the rules with the close nature of the end of the fiscal year and then also the financial deadlines. We do have two requests that we have from applicants for funding of some projects, but we will switch that and just kind of give you more of a background of the program this evening. So while we have your attention here, we will let you know that this program, since its inception in '77, $2.3 million from the county has gone to provide seed money to civic community groups to construct and prove or acquire recreational opportunities in Cabarrus County. The total project cost since the inception, $5.5 million. So huge savings to the county to provide recreational opportunities that are needed in Cabarrus County without having to take the burden fully from here and, in doing so, providing that need throughout the county in multiple ways. And with that, I will let Ray speak to the applicants who have provided those and the recommendation from our Active Living in Parks Commission.
Thank you. So again, the Active Living in Parks Commission had approved two applications, one being the Weddington Hills PTO. They were requesting outdoor seating at their school in their public area. And then application two was the Mount Pleasant Dixie Youth Baseball Association requesting a storage building at the Virginia Field Park to store their equipment needs. Do you all have any questions about those applications?
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Pittman? No, I think we do. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, so we will move on to Carol Soles with the Board of Elections.
My name is Carol Soles. I'm the Director of the Board of Elections and I came to request preliminary approval, but since that will not be available, I can just tell you what we're doing and if you have any questions. We are requesting approval to upgrade our elections equipment, but the actual, only two pieces of equipment would be a computer, then there will be compact flash drives that will go in our existing equipment that's just an added level of security. We will be doing simulated election of this new computer. That's the computer where we do our coding for our equipment and where we put the results on election night. So we're just really just upgrading that computer. But we will be doing a simulated election. Our vendor will do that before we ever use it in a, in an actual election. Any questions?
And just to clarify, this is not changing. It will still be paper ballots.
There will always be paper ballots as long as I'm the Director.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and so now we will move on to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with Heather Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I have both our funding plan and our annual certification. The council voted last month to approve our funding plan. The only change we have to it this year is we are doing two-year funding for our programs that qualify, which would be all of our programs except for the Torrance Court Mediation for Conflict Resolution Center, because that program has only been funded for half a year, so they don't qualify yet. And then Transforming Youth Movement, we have funded them for many years, but they kind of reconfigured how they do things, so they also won't qualify for the two years. So everyone else will be under a two-year funding this coming cycle and then we'll reevaluate those other two programs in the coming year. As to our annual certification, currently we have two vacancies on our council. One is Commissioner, former Commissioner Meesmer's. So we realize that job will be filling that once we have a full commission. And then we have a member of the business community that's left to be filled. So that's kind of where we are with our seats on our council and our funding. Any questions?
No, we're good. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. All right, moving right along, we are going to move to the Library Budget Amendment with Melanie. Hello, Ms. Melanie, how are you?
Good evening. Good, how are you?
Good.
We've just got a couple items that we want to clean up our budget for the end of the year. The first item is from our Friends of the Library. Each of our branch locations has a Friends of the Library group except for Afton. So if anybody in the public is interested in being on the Friends of the Library for Afton, we will be getting information out soon. But our Friends groups support us in a lot of different ways and one way is to help us with the cost of the summer reading program. So each group has donated money to help buy supplies for this year's summer reading program. So we just need to move $425 out of those donations from the Friends of the Library into our programming supplies line to spend it. Another place where we get donations, a lot of times if somebody in the community dies, their family or their church or sometimes book clubs like to make donations to purchase books in honor of that person. So we're going to move $210 out of that donation line into our circulation stock to cover the cost of memorial books that we have purchased throughout the year. The other two items in our amendment are just cleaning up some miscoded lines from the year, so that's all we've got.
Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to 4.6, the Sheriff's Office Acceptance of the K-9 American Kennel Club Grant Funds by Tessa Burchett.
Yes.
And congratulations to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I truly appreciate that.
Well deserved.
Thank you. Good evening. I have with me today Captain Michael Klutz and K-9 Team Leader Deputy Barnhart. So as most of you know, our K-9 operations are extremely important to overall Sheriff's Office operations from drug detection, bomb detection, tracking both criminal offenders and of course, our missing juveniles, vulnerable adults and that type of population. And that's partly why I have our team leader here for the recognition of the great work they do. But of course, there is a cost to running this, which we, you know, we budget for. However, our team leader reached out and applied for this grant through the AKC and all it is, is a $7,500 grant that would fund, it has to be used to purchase a K-9. So we are asking when, at the appropriate time that you would vote to accept that funding. There's no county match required and it would be used to go towards funding another K-9.
Okay.
Any questions?
Ms. Pittman, any questions? No, I think we're good.
No.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, so we will move to 4.7, Social Services Home and Community Care Block Grant, Tammy Bear. Welcome, Tammy.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the Home and Community Care Block Grant, which y'all call HCCBG. It's much easier to say. But it's a grant that benefits citizens that are 60 and older and provides services that promote well-being and independence for those older adults. And it's an investment in keeping our older adults healthier and in the community in their homes longer. So it's a grant that requires a 10% match from the county. And each year we do, are able to use all 100% of the grant each year. And just some highlights from the grant that we used last year that impact to the citizens of the county that were able to receive the grant. There were over 69,000 meals served to older adults, 60 and older. So that's a great impact that. And you're looking at 378 adults in accounting that benefited from that. And those are meals through Meals on Wheels and our Lunch Plus sites. Also, some of the services this grant supports is Adult Day Health and In-Home Aid. Adult Day Health provides services for an individual to attend day services, which often enables their caregivers to continue to work. So that's really important to those families. And In-Home Aid safely remains, is able to continue for the, safely remain at home to take care of themselves at home, such as get bathing assistance, those type of things. So 49 adults received those funds for those services. And for transportation, to medical appointments and Lunch Plus sites, we impacted with this program, this grant, 195 individuals were served in FY '24. Also, part of the grant that it supports is a Housing Home Improvement Program, and FY '24, we're able to assist 39 adults with that program, with minor home repairs, mobility improvements, and things like that. Again, helping to remain in their home longer, because all these programs, we really want them to remain in their home and not go into any kind of long-term care facility. So we all want to remain home, safe in our homes. Another portion that supports some supplies and things for Active Living in Parks, and some of the things they spent on their funds last year were some chairs for like exercise programs, and they were able to renovate their bocce court, be sure I say that right, which is another outdoor things that they do for the senior center. So we do not know the amounts for FY '26, but we've been instructed just to use the amounts from this current year. And with that, does again require the 10% county match, except the Meals on Wheels do contribute their own. So just consideration to submit the grant application for that when the time comes. Any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. All right, 4.8, we'll move to Veteran Services Grant Acceptance with Mr. Tony Miller. Good evening, Mr. Miller. How are you today?
I'm outstanding.
Awesome.
How's everyone doing this evening?
Wonderful, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, first I'd like to inform everybody that we were able to put in for a grant back in March through North Carolina Division of Military Veterans Affairs. In previous years, we've been able to get the amount from 2,000 up to $2,500. This year, we were able to request up to $20,000. And last Thursday, I got an email from Mr. Jim Howden that we were awarded $18,288.97 for Veteran Services. So obviously, that will be utilized in various different functions with Veteran Services, such as office supplies, minor office equipment, personnel, and advertisement to get the word out about Veteran Services a little bit more to allow us to be able to reach more of up to 12,000 veterans here in Cabarrus County. And there is no match with this request.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Pittman?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the work y'all do. My son is a veteran, still in service, but, and I've known a lot of veterans who have needed your help a lot, so I appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yep, absolutely. I'll echo that, too. Thank you so much for all that you do for our veterans.
All right, and I would also like to say, as I said, this came across last Thursday, and there's been a big assistance from everyone throughout the county and various different departments, because there's a turnaround on information that they requested back. So that's been a great help from everybody throughout the county for that as well.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening. All right, next is 4.9. This has to do with transfer of properties to Cabarrus County Schools, and this is for Kelly Sifford.
Thank you. As a matter of practice, we have traditionally, we have to own the properties that we have debt on for the schools. So when we build them, do renovations, things of that nature. The list on the agenda are schools that the debt is completed and expired, we're good to go with returning those back to the school system. So this is simply requesting that and authorizing the county manager to execute the necessary documents. We're working on deeds and things to go with this currently.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Pittman, regarding that?
I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so we will move to, can we do this, we can't do this resolution, right? Yeah, okay. All righty. Okay. Okay, so, well, just going through this, it's approval request to amend the board's resolution amending the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners 2025 meeting schedule to reflect the dates of June 10th through the 11th, or June 10th and the 11th, 2025, for the NCACC County Assembly Day and Legislative Reception in Raleigh. And then we have...
We also are removing that potential budget session from the 5th to the 4th.
Right. That, too. Okay. And then we have multiple boards and committees that are going to need to have additions and replacements. However, we can't really discuss that tonight, so we will move on to, I have asked, I've asked the attorney, Daniel, if he'll make some comments regarding information with our vacancy.
So just briefly following up on the existence of the board vacancy here, as of, under the session law that applies to Cabarrus County, as of tomorrow, Ms. Linker will report to the Clerk of Superior Court that the vacancy has not been filled, and the Clerk of Superior Court will have 10 days under statute to fill the vacancy at that point. And that's who, particularly since, and viewing lack of a quorum tonight, that that will be how that vacancy gets filled. So that's really all I had to say. So thank you.
Yeah.